Austin, y'all good?
What does red mean?
I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is Thursday, May 11th, the regular called City Council meeting for the City Fountain Inn. Thank you all for being here today. First off, if you wouldn't mind bowing your heads for our invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to serve Fountain, the community of Fountain Inn and its residents, its businesses, and our employees. We thank you for all that we are blessed with here in this city, in this state, and in this country, and on your earth. We pray that your guiding hand will help us as we make decisions for our, for our community. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up, we have a special presentation. Someone asked Chief Alexander, Assistant Chief Woods to come up and I guess Dr. B, get ready.
I mean, they can go wherever they, wherever they'd like to go.
Probably, and here's more room.
I'm gonna start, you made an American Council, Dr. B. We just want to give you a thank you for everything you've done for us and for Ember. So we've got a plaque from Ember. Sean, we got a few footprints from like, she got a little, she got a little wall, but uh, just something to hang on the wall. We are grateful to you for all that you did.
Also, for everything you do for the Department as well, for kids, for child, all the great things you do, through my heart, and all of you as well.
Thank you, Dr. B.
To have people like you in the community that have such a passionate caring heart that you want to support public service.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you, Dr. B.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to public forum. We've one person signed up, Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Moon Sullivan. You want to come up?
Yes, ma'am. It should be good to go. It should be good to go.
Okay, I guess first of all, I will introduce myself. It is Deana Moon Sullivan. This is my sister Tracy Moon, my brother Joshua Moon. I have two of my three kids here, Shante Henderson and Natia Sullivan. We are here to really speak on our home property. What should we say? Back in 1998, I mean, I don't know how many elders are here to know of the Moons, but back in 1998, my sister placed a mobile home on our property and we were grandfathered these stipulations because we did some hearing that Ms. Adams has been trying to search for the minutes, that we've been unable to locate. But it seems that I was there, she was there, other people are deceased, my mom, Ms. Ruby Parks, who else? Roger Case was here of course at the time, and he was one of the ones that stated. But part of our stipulations was that we're, it's rezoned I won, and but my grandfather was born in 1906. My dad was born in 1938. I'm 53, I've lived there all my life. They was there before me, so we're like double centuries old. And we have our outhouse for our forefathers, Hasset, and I think the first industry that came was Fisher Barton, for those who remember Fisher Barton. And that wasn't much of a menace, but it's like we're being, trying to be ostracized and devalued because they've been, all these industries, we have the cement trucks, the dump trucks, the chemicals in the air because they're pollutants, and a 5G tower, but yet I have my youngest child finna have a child. And only thing that's our reprieve is we're kind of in a coddle sack, we're nestled back there, but it is still a bunch of inconvenience. And I'll react, we were told in 98 that we have the outhouse, we house a bell from the Old Negro Church that no longer exists, where the Fountain Inn City Park is, where the two African, where a few African-American cemeteries lie, but there was once a church there, but in front of our homehouse is a church. So we have history, have heritage, and a legacy. And I hate to say that I have a legacy that my forefathers gave me, but now that it's time for me to give the pass on the legacy, I can say you can only have a plant. But growing up, we were like the little house on a prairie.
You only have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me tell you why we're here. She done gave you the history of our family now. I've, I've had two mobile homes on Moon Place. One's in 1998, the other one burnt down in 2010. I put another one back there. My, my niece wants to put a mobile home behind her mother's house. I thought I paved the way for all that when I went before the council in 1998. So now she's being told she can't have a mobile home down there. When I came, it was like, you're in city limits, you can't have a mobile home. Then it was like, no, you can't even have a mobile home on your property. It's rezoned. We didn't know what I was there for. So Roger Case said, go home. I went home, my mobile home there. I've had two. So we don't understand why she can't put a mobile home on the same property. That's why we're here.
Man, what street is this?
It's right after Industrial Boulevard.
Industrial Boulevard.
Right behind Chem Strip, Thomas Concrete. See, my dad gave permission to Fisher Barton, Thomas Concrete, and Chem Strip, they need permission. So if I got permission to put a mobile home, I don't see why she needs permission. We've been there almost 200 years. As she said, we got, we were the oldest families in Fountain Inn. Magnus Ellon, PD, all of them were good friends of my father, Mike Gough. All those are very good friends of my father. We just came here so she don't have to go through all this to put them, I've had two mobile homes again on the same property. Now she's been told she can't have one. And I don't understand why.
And also, I would just want the grandfather clause that was given to us, I want it like record, because we're not all, once again, next time, we might not be here. And then it might be my other, my other kids, my other grandkids. You know, I know it's supposed to be our lineage, you know, for our legacy, but you know, if it sells outside the family, if somebody do like downtown green, I'll offer 2.2 million for three acres, go for it. But we need something concrete so that this doesn't happen again.
Yes, and I, for council's knowledge, I know staff is trying to find the right way so that it can be codified, and what the best path forward is for the Moon family. Because there, there's no, and the records that remain, there's no record, it was a city council meeting, if you know, if it was a different meeting. That's what we're trying to locate, Ms. Adams, is digging up new archives. We didn't know we had, in some ways. And going through that, and I know we've got staff trying to kind of determine what is, what is the best path forward for the Moon family so that it's not, there's no question, whatever, whatever the best path is. So just for council's recognition, because I was able to talk to Ms. Adams a little bit before this. So that's, because you know, we're gonna do, if, if there, if change is, is needed, then we want to make sure we're doing it the right way, and that it's in the minutes of a meeting.
And I remember being told that as long as we didn't do anything to the outhouse, we couldn't touch it, we couldn't remodel it, we couldn't paint it, we couldn't prop it up, we couldn't do anything. It had to be in his, uh, it.
Original.
That would be the original state.
And Ms. Adams has pictures of it. I did send her, she showed you.
Yeah. And that was supposed to grandfather clause our land.
And like I said, we have Clayton Homes, my daughter, we spent three months not knowing this was gonna be more of an impediment, because the baby is due in July, so it's definitely not gonna happen before then. So with this, with this impeding the process, we needed something like some permission for Clayton. We need their own home, she's got money being held out there. So there's others, there's so many other steps we gotta take. So it's kind of like time is of essence. And I did pay to have the, my property rezoned. But zoning is not an issue for me. I don't have to have it rezoned. You can call it agriculture, commercial, you can call it anything you want. You know, I just need to know that we have our grandfather status and you can leave it as is.
Yeah, I know. So this is not on, we, we are not allowed to take action on anything not on the agenda in terms of, you know, with, whether it's a planning commission approval or some other sort of mechanism that comes forward. So there's no, city council can't take legally any action in this moment. But I know with staff's work on this, that, you know, we'll be able to hopefully find what's the right tool that can be on the record forever to, in, in one way or another, for, for the Moon family and, and, and everything.
So is there like a timeframe? Because like I said, time is of an essence, right?
It's gonna be based on the legal mechanism that, that, that is used. If it's planning commission, and that goes through the planning commission process, and it comes before council. If it goes through a different body, like a board of zoning appeals, that's just, that goes through the board of zoning appeals only. It doesn't come to council. And those are pretty much the only avenues when we're dealing with zoning that most, most things come with. I don't know, staff can, you know, I'm happy to talk to you after too about walking through that a little bit more after, because we may have a longer agenda tonight. I don't want to hold you here. But I know they've, they've got that process in place. They know that too, or council.
And again, I'm already, I've been down there 12 years and mama will home, I don't see why it should be an issue. But I thought I paved the way for her, and her, and her, and her. When I went through this back in 1998. So I really don't understand what we can hear.
Well, yeah, and I, I know council, I think, doesn't have all the information in front of us either about the history and the zone, what's allowed in each zone and everything like that. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't presume to know either all of the details. So I know staff's gonna give us a better, more in-depth report on, hey, here's, here's the situation, but we, you know, that's.
Because we also would like to know, like, when did the rezoning actually happen? And what, who was the one that, you know, like, my father may have been alive maybe? Like, because it couldn't have been zoned, because when I grew up, it was horses, cows, and cotton fields, and soybean fields. So somewhere along the line, we were not industry, we're not generating wealth living there. We're living there. They're generating wealth.
I think it fits best, if you want to call, I think Ms. Reed is over the, right now over zoning for our, for our community, and knows, knows like the back of her hand. And she can also loop me in if she needs to, like, as soon as tomorrow. Give her a buzz and, and she'll, yeah, she'll loop me in if, or council, whatever, whatever's needed. But I know she'll have all the, all the information for us.
And if it'd be okay, I'd like to come take a look.
Okay.
Yeah.
As early as tomorrow.
That's fine. That is fine. So the thing is, like, how, what's with the process for her, for, for me, what I need to tell Clayton Homes?
I think we're gonna have that answer more better tomorrow, when, with talking to Ms. Reed and, and her staff, who are the textbook experts on what, what's in our codes and the process. That's gonna be the best.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, is approval of the April 13th regular council minutes? Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmers. There a second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on, Mr. Bell, your report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On our new utilities complex, the building is now what we call dried in. The sheet rock and HVAC are almost complete. We are still looking at a projected completion date of July 10th. Sanctified Hill Park, we held our ribbon cutting ceremony and block party on May 5th. It was very well attended and very well received. We are still waiting on four picnic tables to arrive, parking lot lights to be installed by Duke Energy, and Spectrum to install permanent internet out there. But otherwise, the, the park is being utilized. Every time I've gone by, since it opened, the parking lot's been full. And I think that the, the community has really embraced it. Fairview Street Park and Georgia Street Park, both of those basketball courts are almost complete. Should be done either by tomorrow or next week.
Solid goals up today.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Our Woodside Connector and Woodside Streetscape projects are both set for letting in August of this year from SC DOT, and their plan is to let both of those projects at the same time in order to reduce some mobilization costs and to generate additional interest from the construction industry. On our Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex ADA restroom, construction's going to begin here shortly by May 22nd, and weather permitting, should be in operation by fall of this year. And then our interstate signage at Exits 23 and 26, we are hoping to receive our cost estimates by early June. And if, and if those are acceptable and within budget, then the project could be complete by the end of July, early August. In our upcoming events, we do have our Run Hard 5K this Saturday, and it is the superhero 5K route. You'll notice that there'll be some, some street closures in the downtown area this Saturday. Our Sounds of Summer is fast approaching, starting on May 19th, and Farmer's Market starting the following day, and that's Saturday morning, 8:00 AM on May 20th. Our Second Annual Juneteenth Soul Food Festival will be on June 17th, and our vendor applications are accepted until May 25th. And make plans now for our Fourth of July Fireworks Spectacular on July 1st. And wanted to give you a few updates on our, some previous events that we've just had. We, we estimate that the Mac Arnold Jeep Jam Spring, Spring Market, it was a big day. We had a little over 6,500 people in downtown that day. And then the Italian American Heritage Festival had over 9,000 people in, in downtown. In Human Resources, we do have six vacancies for patrol officer. One offer has been accepted, and four have a start date of next week of May 15th. So we are continually recruiting, and at the moment, especially if that accepted offer comes through, we will only have one vacancy left. So we're, we're really making some great progress there. In our Natural Gas Department, we finally received our railroad crossing permit for the installation of a one-mile, six-inch high-pressure steel line on Huntsbridge, Huntsbridge Road. Project is expected to be completed by the end of June. And Parks and Rec Volley Mania Registration will begin here shortly, May 8th through June 8th. And our Adult Coed Softball Registration will be from May 1st through May 24th. And then our 55-plus program, we've started something new this year with some senior trips. On April 20th, 18 seniors took a trip to Travelers Rest for the day. And then upcoming on June 15th, and we are, are still signing folks up, we have a trip to the State House in Columbia. I think they're gonna get a, a tour from Representative Willis. Our quick comprehensive plan or envision update, as of earlier this week, we've had 689 survey responses, which is, has been really good. We have public engagement from our consultants scheduled at the Sounds of Summer on June 9th, at our Farmer's Market on June 10th, and then at our Juneteenth Festival, June 17th. And summaries of all of the public input sessions that we've had thus far will be posted on our website soon. In the Fire Department, we've had two firefighters recently complete all their steps to obtain EMT certification, firefighters Landon Epps and Thomas Williams. And kind of the current status of that is that we have 15 full-time employees with EMT certification, three part-time employees, and four additional full-time employees are undergoing testing or reciprocity at the moment. So we are really making headway and getting our, our entire department EMT trained. In the Police Department, the Third Annual Superhero 5K Run, which was held on April 19th, they had 267 runners cross the finish line. And to compare that, Year 1, we had 151 runners. Year 2, we had 211 runners. And so the net that we will be able to donate to the Little White House will be right at $14,000, which is really incredible. Upcoming on May 24th is our 24th Annual Golf Tournament for the Police Department. Shotgun start at 12 over at Carolina Springs. And then the South Carolina Law Enforcement Accreditation, or SCLEEA, performed their onsite accreditation assessment, April 25th and 26th. And our department will be attending an assessment hearing on June 2nd, and we will be notified if we have been accredited or not. All signs are pointing to, to that happening. This is still Spring Cleaning Month, the entire month of May, where you can put your items up at the curb, as long as they're three feet away from mailboxes and cars. But we do ask you to please schedule those pickups ahead of time. And Chamber of Commerce, they, Marnie is working on a Fountain Innopoly and getting sponsors from our, our business community. I'm, I'm looking forward to purchasing that and having family game night at my house with Fountain Innopoly. And then at the Yacht Center this weekend, May 12th, which is tomorrow at 8:00 PM, there's Finding Nemo Jr. And then on Saturday, May 13th, 2:00 PM is also Finding Nemo Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions for Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Clemmers.
Fresh my memory, what is the increase in pay for an EMT at the fire station? $1,000?
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Rebecca, do you know?
Chief Sam.
$1,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a little feedback on the spring clean. I went on the website last night. It is not easy to maneuver.
Okay.
I saw where some were signed up. I could never get, when I went in to sign up, I could never get a verification on the date. I signed up for Monday, and it just kept asking for it to, to re-log in or whatever, to resign. So I'll check it tonight. It may have gone through, just don't, just FYI.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? I just want to thank our staff who worked on the Sanctified Hill opening. I know Liz did a lot of work on that, and Naomi, and our Public Works crews, our Recreation Department. And thank you all so much for the police and folks who are out there as well to celebrate. That was, and, well, actually, I think nearly all of council stopped by at, at some point. Your better half came, Mr. Don, which is, which was, that, that better, that was better. So thank you all so much. And I'm, I'm, we've already taken our daughter there a couple times, and it's, it's, it's really great. All right. Moving on to unfinished business. We've got second and final reading of ordinance Z 2023-2. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Z 2023-2 for second reading would rezonate approximately 2.69 acres, 108 and 110 Nash Street, from R12 residential to C2 commercial. Our adopted future land use map calls for commercial on these subject parcels, which is consistent with C2 zoning. The subject parcels consist of a vacant house at 108 Nash Street and a vacant lot at 110. The surrounding land uses and zoning are industrial to the north, commercial to the south and west, and residential to the east. Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve this rezoning request at our March 2 meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, is there a motion to approve on second reading Z 2023-2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Step is item number B, second and final reading of ordinance Z 2023-3. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Z 2023-3 for second reading would rezonate approximately 25.15 acres on Speedway Drive near Quillan Avenue from PD and R15 to FRD, Flexible Review District. The Adopted Future Land Use Map calls for high-density residential and recreation use for this area, which is consistent with the proposed Flexible Review District. The applicant is proposing 180 townhomes on 14 acres of this property and 11 acres of open space. I sent you all an updated site plan earlier today. You have a hard copy there. The Planning Commission will, if, if this is approved at second reading, would have to approve a final development plan as well as preliminary plat from the SAC comments. Happy to, to answer any other questions?
This is an FRD before I?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've got a couple of questions, but you know, on the table, I'll make a motion to approve on second reading Z 2023-3. Thank you, Mr. Thomason. Is that a second from you? So that's, okay, for second, Mr. Garrett, we'll go that way. All right. Anyone have questions first? I've, I've got one or two. All right, I'll go. Ms. Brown, I know at the last meeting, we had, I think, really two specific items that we had talked about on council that we wanted to hear feedback from. And I know we have a map in front of us and, you know, gotta make sure I understand it correctly. I believe, especially from sidewalk access across Speedway, that's something that's in our code normally. And I know that's always something our Planning Commission holds dear. And also, the buffer, I know it's Mr. Don, I think, in particular, but I know a lot of us have similar feelings, but about, I guess, what's the word, a natural buffer there. Can you walk us through those two things in particular?
Sure. So on the updated site plan, you, you see that the sidewalk does start at the property line closest to Fountain Drive, if you will, and it goes down to that first entrance. Then through that entrance, there's a sidewalk through the subdivision that will then take you to the second entrance. And then there is sidewalk, I believe. And then there is sidewalk, I believe, through the other apartment complex that is being built. There's also called out for a trail that goes through the property. They are working with Uganda on getting the trail easements as well as the construction funding. And as far as your buffer, so they have called out a Type B buffer in between the rear of the townhomes and Belmont Estates. Our Type B buffer is called out in our code. There are different options. So if the width of the buffer is 10 to 15 feet, then that requires, you know, one large canopy tree every 500 square feet, or one deciduous tree per 550 feet, or one shrub every 200 feet. And then as the width of that buffer gets larger, then it's one large canopy tree per 900 square feet, one deciduous every 700, and one shrub every 350 square feet. In talking to the applicant, that natural buffer that you see on here between Belmont Estates and the townhomes is primarily pine trees, and it's actually pretty see-through. In fact, the Type B buffer, like those pine trees would not be considered adequate as a large canopy tree, would not be adequate as a deciduous tree. And so they will take a look, and they will go with the more restrictive buffer there. And likely, that would be the installation of, you know, large canopy or deciduous tree as opposed to the existing pines there.
Okay. I've got one thing for the, I know I think some folks have asked about the Swamp Rabbit Trail. Last time, it is detailed in this map. So that's good to see. The only other question I know that the Planning Commission, in our notes at least, says required, and I noticed a word potential here, but emergence, a third emergency access. I believe Planning Commission wants that specified specifically. Obviously, I assume that means it will be required by the, of the applicant once it gets to, whether it's Final Development Plan or whatever. So the fact that says potential, I get that. I guess, can you, maybe Sean, elaborate a little more on, I assume when they get to Planning Commission, that'll have to be definite, whether it's there or maybe somewhere else. But in this moment, it says potential.
Yes, sir. So our code states that multiple means of ingress and egress need to be provided anytime you are subdividing a property that's five acres or greater. And so they do have two particular entrances into the subdivision already, which would meet that code. And then in previous, you know, previous staff, previous planning commissions have also considered, you know, trail access is also another mode of connectivity of ingress and egress. So I don't know that a third or potential third emergency access is necessary to meet our land development regulations or code. I do think that they would like to have that and are working with the apartment complex owners to obtain that. But the two entrances do currently meet that.
Well, I guess my question is, for you or cause, if the Planning Commission put that as a stipulation, then the words in our notes are emergency access location be provided. I would assume that that means, whether it's, I know it says potential here, so that, you know, you can't hold them to maybe like it's going in this exact 10-foot span or whatever. But that, once it comes to Planning Commission, that's a stipulation they'll have to meet when it comes back to the SAC or Final Development Plan.
Yes.
Okay. So in terms of that question about third access, the fact that Planning Commission has already required as a condition, that carries forward in our proposal in front of us. Go down a Venn diagram there on that one. Sorry, y'all. Those are the, those are the questions I have. Does anyone else have questions?
I don't have a question. I just, since I had a number of questions last time and just wanted to be able to share, I appreciate, one, the city staff and the developer and the petitioner that you all were able to communicate and share these updated diagrams with us and work together on this buffer, just personally. I think it probably comes down more to a preference issue. And I'm gonna support this tonight because I do think that the landowner with the agreement that was in place functionally for nearly 30 years, that they had an impression on how this was gonna look. And I think that that's probably something that we should honor, at least from my point of view. It's not something that I would prefer to do in terms of development in this particular parcel. But I tend to think that if you have an agreement or an understanding with an entity, then you ought to be able to operate under that understanding. So I'm gonna go ahead and support it tonight, but it's not necessarily my preference.
Mr. Don? I don't disagree either. And the only question I have, I guess, for council to think about is if in this, in, you know, maybe it's an amendment to the motion. I'm not gonna make it now, but that Mr. Bell's comments about, and I know the applicant's already said they will do this. That's why I'm comfortable saying as, the most restrictive as feasible on the buffer, having that be a stipulation, just so that the Planning Commission gets it, because they're the ones that will see the final, that they understand council's intent. And they can be, they can get in the weeds on whether or not, you know, that, that's really specific. So whether that, okay, that makes sense why that tree can't go there or something like that. But we can give them the understanding that council would like this to be as restrictive as the applicant has stated. That's fine.
I think that's reasonable since they've gone ahead and conceded that they would do that.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I think you're probably gonna need to amend your motion anyway because the motion is going to need to be approval of the revised site plan.
That's fair.
For the record.
Okay, okay. I can do all that in one thing, right? Okay. My only, I'm curious how other council members feel about this. I really like the sidewalk being down Speedway. I drove it today. I understand the, I get it. But I also know, in talking today, actually, with the folks who are helping us with the Swamp Rabbit Trail, that future Swamp Rabbit Trail, in order to get it down Speedway, may require sidewalks in order to achieve that goal. And I don't want that direction to go into someone's neighborhood. That's been something that's on me. So I don't know how y'all feel about that. That can be, I'll open that up for discussion. I want y'all's feedback on that.
I'm okay with the sidewalks that you got in here. I'd like to see them all the way up the street on the outside of the neighborhood, but I can live with this.
Anybody else?
Probably going back to the Fire Act or the Emergency Act. So yes, I understand it's got two. It's got two going to the front parcel, but to that back parcel, it's still only got one.
That's what I was thinking as well.
And that is exactly the conditions that were stipulated, I'm pretty sure, by staff. And what was adopted by the Planning Commission was for some sort of an emergency access on that rear, which this is a Flexible Review District, and you all can add, you know, conditions. But like I said, in other subdivisions, if it was a conventional zoning, it would meet the definition of the multiple means of connectivity.
And I think the fact Planning Commission already says that they need to, so that'll carry forward. And Planning Commission, I know they'll hold them to that pretty well.
I'll echo Mr. Thomason, if I might, just with the sidewalk. I do think, just from an aesthetics point of view, it does look nice if the sidewalk is continuous. Hopefully, every due effort and goodwill effort would be made to make the sidewalks continuous.
All right. Trying to get my right order in my brain. I'd, so it's understanding from, based on what council's discussion is, I don't know. I think it sounds like some folks are okay with it going through the neighborhood, the sidewalk. So I won't make that a part of my motion. However, I know that's something that's big on me, and it's something that's big on Planning Commission. So I'm good with the motion that we're about to make of the updated plan and the buffer. However, I have hangups on the sidewalk piece, and I know that can be a little tiny thing sometimes. But for me, that's pretty important. I know it's important to our code and stuff. So I'm just saying that for y'all to not, and misinterpret this, is I don't, I totally understand council's will on this.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could we make that a priority? And maybe not necessarily have this be a must-have or a must-do, but can we make that a priority and ask that in the Flexible Review District terms, that a sidewalk, a continuous sidewalk be made a priority, necessarily an essential, but a priority?
Yeah, I would like that. I'm trying to figure out the wording that isn't requiring, but rather whether it's providing options. I don't know if that's appropriate. I'm looking at where to.
I mean, Mayor, I think that rather than requiring it as a condition, I think simply suggesting to the developer that that is something that, to any developer in an FRD, that that would be something that would be valued by the city council as an effort to include that in their design.
Yeah. I would also, I guess, concede that I think this conversation has told the Planning Commission how much that this is of a part and the developer. I would, I think, also concede that. And then while it may not be necessarily, Mr. I don't know if we can put like that sort of flexibility. So if it's absent of the motion, I hope that this discussion is that.
Something that just kinda came to my mind is that we do have in our code, and it is rare, but that septic lots are allowed in some of our zoning categories with the condition that the applicant or developer builder provides some sort of an analysis that shows that bringing sanitary public sewer is not feasible, whether that's because they have to obtain an easement or it's cost-restrictive.
I got you.
That sort of condition might suffice in that if they're, they would have to give you a compelling reason for not including the sidewalk, whether that be just an outlandish cost or something else.
I think I got you. So if it's okay with council, I think I'll make a motion. This is not the motion, but the motion I will make is, is the buffer restrictive, the updated site plan, and then providing justification on if the sidewalk cannot be continuous along Speedway to the Planning Commission. Is that okay? All right. So I'm gonna make a motion to amend the motion to approve, to include, to include the updated site plan as well as that the applicant take the least, the most restrictive buffer possible along the, on the backside of the property. And if not feasible to provide sidewalk continuous along Speedway, to provide the justification to the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions on the motion to amend? All those in favor to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And now it's the motion to approve the zoning as amended. That's already on the table. Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Well done, Mayor.
Thank you. Lots of practice. Next up is item C, second and final reading of ordinance 2023-2, which is intergovernmental agreement for MAS-C, the rebranding ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second reading of ordinance 2023-2. This is a request from the Municipal Association of South Carolina, or MAS-C. The city found in, like nearly all other municipalities in the state, utilize MAS-C to collect certain revenues on our behalf and then remit them back to us. MAS-C has rebranded this service, these collection programs, to be named Local Revenue Services. That, along with the adoption of the new local business license ordinances that were standardized throughout the state, is requiring the adoption of ordinance 2023-2.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-2 on second reading? Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Thomason. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is second and final reading of ordinance 2023-3, which is a franchise fee for cable service. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. And our city attorney, Mr. Kuzlar, can also answer any questions. But all this ordinance does is codify that if we are, if the city is to enter into any future franchise agreements that are allowed by law, that we are setting the 5% gross revenue franchise fee for all of those in the future.
For cable?
For cable.
Those, okay. Is there a motion to approve on second final reading 2023-3? Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I have one question. Those still, well, two. Well, that would come, even if it's five, it still comes before council?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know if council doesn't want to do this now. We don't have a language. We'll come back to it. I think it might be better. But I think at some point, maybe sooner than later, putting in there, if we're always gonna charge five, then allowing the administrator to execute those might be something to look at, what the language looks like for that. And if it's different than five and council has a decision to make whether or not to charge less, that may be of benefit for, next time around, Mr. Kuzlar, if you don't mind?
I don't mind.
All right. There is a motion second on 2023-3. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item E, ordinance 2022-10, planned development major change. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is technically a rezoning. It's basically a major change to the Eagle Springs Plan Development. The previously approved development plan from back in 2008, excuse me, showed 20-plus houses to be constructed on tax map number 1603, ending in that, right at just over 24 acres. The Planning Commission voted in favor of this change unanimously at our October 4th, 2022 meeting. The applicant stated he wanted to subdivide that existing parcel in two for a house for himself and his daughter, which would not affect the plan development or remaining golf course in any way. This parcel, this 24 acres, was not included in any portions of the Zone 3 Final Development Plan that was approved back in 2021. And with that, I recommend approval on second reading of 2022-10.
I'll make a motion to approve Z 2022-10. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. New business, item A, request for approval of a license agreement between PBRT2 Investments LLC and City. Mr. Bell?
Mr. Kuzlar?
Or Mr. Kuzlar?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This involves the parking lot area that's on Fairview and Depot Road. There's a longstanding discussion about if the city has any interest in the, what is clearly the private portion of the parking lot. There was a discussion at some point in the past about the city's ability to use or have the public use a portion of that parking lot for parking and also for ingress and egress to the city-owned portion of the parking. There is some development that is gonna be taking place on the private portion of the parking lot. And as part of the condition of closing for the title insurance company, they needed something from the city recognizing that the city does not have any ownership interest in that area of the parking lot. But also, the city requested that we would have a license after the closing of that property so that as long as there is no development, the city basically can still use that or the public can still use that for ingress and egress and parking. So that license agreement would be approved tonight as well as the recognition that the city did not claim any real property interest in that portion of the parking lot. Because it is a license agreement and there are future plans to develop the parking lot itself, at some point, the developer would have the ability to terminate that license agreement whenever they were ready to move forward. So again, that's really all this is, is effectively a disclaimer of any interest in the property by the city and the agreement to only use the city subject to that, or only use the property subject to that license agreement.
And I, and in your packet is the actual license agreement. The resolution that references that is on record right here. But the reference is, it's just as whereas, and it says C Attachment A, essentially.
And I believe the immediacy of this is that the purchaser of the former Kimbrel's building is planning on renovating soon and would use this private 0.241 acres of parking lot for staging of the construction and demolition. And then any sort of development of that actual parking lot, if that ever happens, is somewhere down in the future. But the immediate use is to use that for the rehabilitation of the former Kimbrel's building.
And I understand the intent is to come to City Hall tomorrow to pick up a copy of Jimmy's documents. It goes on Monday.
So thank you, first of all, for answering my email so promptly today. So just so that I'm clear and that everyone... So, just so that I'm clear, and that everyone is clear, the building known as the...
Annex.
Annex, where the museum stores, I guess, certain things, that's not affected.
No, sir.
Nor is the electric charging station. So, how far, what do we own? I guess that's what I need to know.
I got you.
I just need to understand what we own.
So, if you're looking, if you're on Depot Street, and you are looking at the back of the buildings that are on Main Street, the city-owned portion is kind of right behind the SOC Ministry and the current Swanky Steer building.
Okay.
So, if you turn onto Depot from Fairview, turn left or right onto Depot, you drive just basically to the point where it's the back of SOC Ministry, Swanky Steer. Everything else, all the way to the Chamber of Commerce building, is city-owned. But, at some point, when Depot Street was redone, they included all of that to look like one harmonious parking lot.
So, this doesn't affect the property at all that's parking behind pumps out? There's that little alleyway there?
No, sir.
Or the warehouse that they have?
No, sir.
Okay.
Also, for reference, on Depot, if you go, so there's an entrance on Fairview Street, everyone knows that. When you turn onto Depot, there's one entrance, and then down the line is a second entrance. Essentially, at the end of that first entrance is where their property is. It's the Fairview Street entrance and the first Depot Street entrance. It's about, I'm looking at the map, it's about 10 spots or so, give or take, if you count the dumpster spots.
We lose a lot of parking, unfortunately.
And we will have, they may...
Well, there's 10 parking spots.
Yeah. And I don't believe the applicant knows exactly their future use on this, if it'll be permitted for, if they have residences, or if they don't, or if it's whatever, but we will at least have the access to our half, and I think if, should some stuff happen in Columbia, we may have some funds to help alleviate some of that parking issues.
It's timely that Taco is moving their catering over to Georgia Street, so they can move their trucks.
Might be. So, I'll make a motion to approve the request for a license agreement between PBRT2 and the city Fountain, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Make sure I sign that right one, Mr. Don. That's just a one reading thing? Yes, sir. Good question. Next up is Item B, request for initial, request for approval to initiate a text amendment of dimensional requirements in the zoning ordinance. Mr. Bell, you want to walk us through this one?
Yes, sir. So, this is a bit of a stranger item, if you will. Back in Resolution 2021-3, which was adopted in March of '21, the adopted resolution said that Fountain and City Council does hereby direct the Fountain and Planning Commission and city administrator to review our existing zoning ordinances, land development regulations, and the 2017 master plan, and make recommendations for any needed changes or amendments, and report the same to city council. And since that time, we've been going through her zoning code, know that there are a lot of deficiencies. We also looked at that 2017 master plan and realized that it was outdated in five years rather than the full 10, and that's why we're undergoing our comprehensive plan right now. You know, we've had some staff turnover, and our new planning and development manager found a, some conflicting items in our zoning code, where in one section of our code, it references height limitation and setbacks for front yard, side yard, rear yard, dimensional requirements, and then in another section, in the same zoning code, offers different set of dimensional requirements for those. And so, our code of ordinances currently says that petitions for text changes or amendments by any interested property owner or resident of the city Fountain and must first be presented to council, and then, in the event that council recommends approval of that, that it would then be, go back to Planning Commission for that public hearing. And so, what you all are being asked to tonight, if this is the way you all want to do it, would be that you are saying that, yes, we agree that this is something that the Planning Commission should have a public hearing on, and should take a look to see whether or not these dimensional requirements need to be cleaned up. Staff isn't proposing at this time any sort of change in any of those substantive change. It would just literally be removing the duplication to clarification purposes.
So, this is telling the Planning Commission to look at, and they will propose the actual text changes, which you're saying are really just going to be cleanup at this stage, and then those will come to us for two readings.
That's right.
We're just telling the Planning Commission, please go do this.
Yeah, and so, you know, maybe in a future zoning code, maybe this is something that you all want to just start at the Planning Commission and staff level and move forward, but per our current code, it's saying that council should direct the Planning Commission for those.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the request to explore these items. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett, quietly over there. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is an appointment for Director of Community Relations, Mr. Martin Lane. Hey, Martin. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, our community relations department is, it's still fairly new, and we have not actually had a department head over that department since inception. We had a previous manager, and then since that staff member has left us, it has left that department really without that top leader, like all of our other departments have. And so, through an extensive search, we have, we were very lucky to have found Mr. Martin Lane, who has been working for the city of Rock Hill since 2013, in charge of all of their downtown programming events, promoting and preserving their Main Street and downtown community. He's the executive director of their Old Town Association, the executive director of their Christmasville-Rock Hill event, and he currently serves as the board president of Southeast Festivals and Events Association. He is a former small business owner, he's a former town commissioner in Waxahau, North Carolina, and I believe he has already found residents here locally in the community. And so, with that, we are, I am recommending the appointment of Mr. Martin Lane for the Director of Community Relations.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I know Mr. Don and I were able to talk with Mr. Lane, and really enjoyed our conversation, obviously. So, I want to thank you, Mr. Lane, for applying, and for staff, and also our community relations staff for doing a great job, and leading the team. And so, that, I'll make a motion to approve Martin Lane as the Director of Community Relations. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome, Mr. Lane.
Welcome.
And upon that, his start date will be...
May 24.
So, good timing. All right. Next, and last, we have an executive session to discuss matters relating to the proposed location expansion of provision of services encouraging the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the city concerning Project Grind. Is there anything af, we don't, anything after that? No. Okay. So, is there a motion to go into executive session for that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Any second? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now go into executive session.